And the communication falls out, so I think we've recovered, though.
We all live in that world, I think, with emails coming from every direction. So I'm glad you're able to make time and join us this morning.
Thank you. Thank you for making the time for me. I'm excited to get to talk to the city of Burlington today.
Well, we'll officially do our little due diligence and open the meeting, and then I'm going to hand things over. So good morning, everyone. Welcome. This is our June 12, 2021 Burlington City Council's special meeting. Due to the coronavirus, this meeting is again being held via the Zoom platform. Please note, this meeting is live streaming on our YouTube page at youtube.com/COBNC. And please note, the meeting is being recorded. We'll go ahead and open things by turning over the meeting to City Manager Harden Watkins. Harden, are you with us?
I'm here. Yep, sorry for the delay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Senator Gailey, Representative Riddell, Representative Hurtado. Thank you for joining us this morning. We appreciate the opportunity to share with you. First of all, congratulations on your election. We look forward to working with you during the next year. And at some point, when we're allowed, we'll want to visit with you in Raleigh as well. Try to do that. We try to stop by any time we may be in the neighborhood to check in. Again, we all look forward to working with you. We're going to introduce our team as well. Obviously, our elected officials will go first. And then we'd like you to meet our senior leadership team, representing each of our city departments as well. Just so you can put faces with names, anticipating when we get into the session, that we may bring a subject matter expert with you. Or again, if they're down in the legislative building with one of their professional organizations, we've asked them to, you know, check in with you while they're there to say hello, if nothing else. So again, we want to obviously build relationships and strengthen relationships as we can. And then one of the first steps is today. And as we move forward with today's meeting, we've got an agenda we'll follow. You've seen some of the materials in writing, so no surprises beyond what's on that sheet. But feel free to stop us at any time, jump in, ask questions. Or if you have comments or things you want to add to or ask about, please feel free to do so at any moment in time. So with that, looking forward to just having everyone introduce themselves. So Mayor, I'll yield the floor back to you. And I guess if we want to ask council members to introduce themselves, and then our members of our delegation.
Very good. I think we've got four members of our council with us today. So to kick things off, I'm Mayor Ian Baltudis. I'm serving now in my third term as Mayor of the city of Burlington. And honored to continue to serve here in both my role as mayor, and then I also serve on the North Carolina League of Municipalities as a board member at large, and now in my second term with the League's board. So happy to work with our delegation and looking forward to North Carolina coming back strong through this pandemic. I think we're in a wonderful state as a state, and Burlington and Alamance County are well positioned to succeed through this. So I look forward to this conversation. And Amy, I wanted to congratulate your son recently got his Eagle Scout. Chad Kobel and I have been working on our wood badge through scouting lately, and he mentioned that he was on the review board. So congratulations there from one Eagle Scout to a mother of another. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mother of two. I have two Eagles Scouts.
All right, I'll hand things over to our Mayor Pro Tem Kathy Hikes.
That's about all I have to say. I'm happy to see you all and begin this relationship in the next year. I'm Kathy Hikes, and I'm Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilmember Bob Ward.
Good morning. I'm Bob Ward. I've been around for a while. Most of you know that I used to be the attorney for the city, and now I'm in my third term on the city council. I'd just like to add my congratulations to Amy, Dennis, and Ricky. And we really appreciate you coming this morning, look forward to working with you. And by all means, at any time, if we can help, you know, by the way of information or you need us to, well, really do anything of a legislative nature, just please give us a call.
Councilmember Harold Owen.
Morning. I'm Harold Owen. I was a former city manager in Burlington, finishing up the first term on the council. I am employed at a consultant basis with the League of Municipalities. And certainly, we look forward to working with each of you and on a number of interesting but also challenging issues that from a municipality side, municipalities face all over the state. Some really, really serious challenges. So we look forward to being part of a solution and going forward. So thanks for being here today.
Very good. As far as our delegation, Amy, do you want to kick things off?
Sure. Thank you. I'm Amy Gailey. I hope, you know, we're all familiar to each other, having just finished up being Chair of the County Commission. My committees that I've been assigned to are Justice or the Judiciary Committee, Education, State and Local Government, and Appropriations for Judiciary. So I know that those are all three areas that we all have a lot of concern about. So I'm excited about being able to represent the district in those areas. Yeah, if I drop out with my video, it means that my internet connection is getting bad. I noticed you have broadband on your list of priorities and goals. It's one of mine as well. You know, I live out near Lake Kamak, and the wire goes through the ground up to Lake Kamak but not past it. So I have to rely on this hotspot. And sometimes in these Zoom meetings, I find that if I go to, if I take, just use the audio and turn off the video, then I can maintain a connection better. So if I do go to video, then that's what that's, I mean, to not have in video, then that's what that's all about. So thank you for your patience with that.
No problem. We understand. Representative Ricky Hurtado.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. It's great to see a lot of you again and great to meet a lot of you for the first time this morning. I'm Ricky Hurtado and recently was elected to House 663. I have not been appointed to any committees yet, but those are soon to come. So I can let you know how and what capacity I'll be working on in the General Assembly. But I do know that local government is certainly a passion of mine. And a little-known fact about my own education is a big chunk of my grad school career was dedicated to focusing on urban policy and planning. That was actually my concentration. And so I think we're in an incredibly exciting time in Burlington and in Alamance County as it continues to grow, to be a leader in the state and how to grow equitably and really advance the interests of all of our families and communities together. And so I'm excited to be a part of this conversation. And please count on me as a friend and an ally to continue moving Burlington's agenda forward in the next few years. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. And Representative Dennis Riddell.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. It's good to be back here with you. I wish we could do it in person, but perhaps that day is maybe around the corner. A little bit about me, this is my fifth two-year term. I've enjoyed my eight years thus far. It's been an incredible, incredible experience and privilege to be down in Raleigh. My background, for some of you who may not know me, 35 years as an engineering officer in the United States Merchant Marine. In between there, there were seven years of teaching high school social studies. I married to Polly. We've been married 38 years. We have eight children and about a dozen horses, three dogs, and two lazy cats. We live down in the southern part of the county, Snow Camp, and we're looking forward to working with y'all. The only committee assignments I have thus far is renewing my chairmanship of the House Regulatory Reform Committee. And somebody on the council may know and remember that there are things that we've done in regulatory reform in a response at the request of the League. And there are some things we've done that we're done, not at the request of the League. So I look forward to your input on whatever we might be doing to regulatory reform. I have asked to return to House Appropriations, House Elections, House Energy and Public Utilities, and the Education K-12 Committee. And I expect those will be released probably next week or two. So looking forward to our meeting today, and anytime you need to contact me. Certainly, I am responsive to you and will be available. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm gonna, if I add, I will tell you, if you do visit, advise our staff of this, too. If you do visit the legislature and you're there for other business, but you don't go by to see Representative Riddell, he will find out and he will call you and ask you why you didn't stop by to visit with him.
We'll certainly visit, okay?
Okay.
We'll come to see you, Dennis, okay?
Always have an open door.
Oh, well, we've got a large selection of our senior staff on the call, and I'd like for them to quickly go through and introduce themselves. We can either just go off the agenda, or I can just introduce folks individually, and they can give their title and department real quick. I'll go down the list. We'll start with David Huffman.
David Huffman, City Attorney for Burlington.
He's hard to recognize with all the extra facial hair going on right now.
Everybody's surprised that it actually grows.
Rachel Kelly.
I am Rachel Kelly, Assistant City Manager with the city of Burlington over Administrative Services, and I've been with the city for about 10 years.
Nolan Kirkman.
Hey, Nolan Kirkman, Assistant City Manager with Development Services.
Jessica Arias.
Hi, I'm Jessica Arias, and I'm Director of Animal Services Department. And I also serve on the Board of the North Carolina Animal Federation.
Scott Bibbler.
I'm Scott Bibbler. I'm the IT Director for the city. Been with the city for 14 years.
Peter Bishop.
Good morning. I'm Peter Bishop. I'm the Director of Economic Development for the city of Burlington. I also serve on the Legislative Committee for the North Carolina Economic Developers Association. So may see you a little bit this year.
Jamie Joyner.
Good morning. I'm Jamie Joyner, the Human Resources Director for the city of Burlington.
Todd Lambert.
Good morning. I'm Todd Lambert, city engineer. So we look at both private development and city capital improvement projects.
Morgan Laster.
I'm Morgan Laster, the Community Engagement Manager for the city of Burlington and within that house, the Public Information Office.
Tony Laws.
Morning. I'm Tony Laws, Director of Recreation and Parks, and I'm on my 52nd year with the city.
Jay Mebbin.
Good morning, all. I'm Jay Mebbin, Burlington Fire Chief.
Mike Nun.
Good morning, Mike Nun. I'm the Director of Planning and Transportation for the city.
Bob Patterson.
Good morning. I'm Bob Patterson, Water Resources Director over Water, Sewer, and Stormwater.
Peggy Reese.
Finance and Risk Management.
Beverly Smith.
Good morning, everyone. I'm the interim city clerk, Beverly Smith.
Jeff Smythe.
Good morning, everybody. I think I know all of you. I'm Jeff Smythe, the police chief.
John Vernon.
I'm John Vernon. I am the Public Information Officer.
And Russell Williams.
Good morning. I'm Russell Williams. I am the Director of Inspections for the city of Burlington, and today is my second day on the job.
Welcome, Russell. We're glad you're able to join us for this important call.
Thank you.
So Russell, you got to meet the city council today, too.
Just kind of knocked out all the introductions in one go for you. All right, Harden, I'm going to turn things back over to you for topics.
Okay, so we, I think you all got via email a list of topics from us. And so I'm going to yield the floor to Rachel Kelly, our Assistant City Manager, Administrative Services. Rachel has also been our legislative liaison even in the days before she became Assistant City Manager. So this has been her specialty area for a number of years. The city is trying to understand the issues that sort of are our priority for the year, working closely with the League and/or, like I said, any of our professional organizations that our department heads may be involved with. We want to share with you a little bit today as well from the North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police. So Chief Smythe will share a few thoughts and comments from them. But as the year goes on, if there, you know, so for instance, if there was a water sewer issue, Bob Patterson would share that, and we may take some advice from some of the professional associations that we have. As Peter said, I know the Economic Developers Group is pretty active as well in the legislature. And just, so we want to, we'll try to keep all those coordinated. And with that, I think we want to start off and talk a little bit about some of our recent successes. So celebrate our successes first, then talk about looking forward to the next year. We've counted on our legislators and the legislature to really help us get some of our most important things accomplished. We look forward to that in the future. So we wanted to just take a minute and celebrate what we have been able to do over the past few years. So Rachel, if you'll take it from here, please.
Sure. Can everybody see my screen, this picture with this girl with beautiful smile?
You can, Rachel.
Good. Fantastic. So we won't belabor the point, but we did think it was really worth a moment to look at some pictures of projects that were partnerships in some way with the state and our state delegates in recent years. So we will start with a recent success is the North Park Pool Expansion and Renovation. This project was spearheaded by a $200,000 allocation in the state budget. I know Senator Gunn was a champion of that, of course, supported by Representative Riddell and Representative Ross. That $200,000 allocation kicked us off and helped us begin planning to repair and replace this pool and bathhouse. As you see, this is the previous pool. It was circa 1950s, and it was a much-needed and overdue renovation. And now you can see that we were able to open this this summer, late summer, amidst the pandemic, but our features include lap lanes, a water-walking track, diving board, splash features, picnic pavilion, party room, improved handicap access, and improved bathhouse amenities. So it really is a gorgeous new asset for the community, and we can't wait for a full swim season in 2021 for the community to truly be able to enjoy it. Next up, we'll talk about the City Park Creek Remediation. This one's a little complex, and we won't go into all the history. But of course, if you'd like to know more, Bob Patterson, our Water Resources Director, is our expert on that. This is an aerial of our city park in the center of town. And Little Alamance Creek, you can see the blue line runs through Burlington City Park. We entered into a conservation easement with the state for Little Alamance Creek Buffer, and it turned out to be an extremely poor fit for this urban park, and it led to aesthetic issues and safety concerns in our flagship park. As you can see, picture's worth a thousand words. The city works closely for several years with our state delegation. And in the 2018-2019 budget, we were able to have over $800,000 allocated to help pay the mitigation credits to get out of the mitigation buffer, which is wonderful. We're working through that process. It is kind of arduous and administrative, but we're on the right path to be able to maintain this creek buffer in a way that's more conducive for the urban park setting and much safer for our residents. Next up is the Burlington Arboretum at Willowbrook Park. This is a wonderful community partnership that's really starting to come to life. But again, it was kicked off with almost $300,000 in Parks and Recreation Trust Fund funding. So that was really something that helped get this project started, and part of dollars are a catalyst for significant creative park projects in Burlington and across the state. So along with city dollars and that part of funding, we had private support from the New Leaf Foundation and a grant from Impact Alamance to help build out Willowbrook Park and turn it into the Burlington Arboretum at Willowbrook Park. The features of the arboretum include this beautiful restroom building and picnic area, a great lawn, a veterans memorial, increased parking, a beautiful paved walkway that's getting tons of use already, creek access, which is wonderful to educate young people about our aquatic life and healthy creeks, a children's garden, treehouse, public art seating areas, and more. So this is currently under construction. All the features should be up by the fall. But the park is overflowing with folks really enjoying this new asset to the community. So that part of funding is really critical. Next up is the Paramount Theater seating replacement. So unfortunately, this project didn't go forward, but we did think it was worth mentioning. Specifically, Senator Gunn pushed to have $100,000 in state allocation, budgetary allocation, set aside to have the seats replaced in our historic theater. They desperately need it, still do. And we really appreciated him seeking out ways to use state funding to improve this historic asset in our downtown. This was unfortunately lost in the budget stalemate last year. But we're hopeful for future opportunities to leverage state resources that are available for arts and culture and improvement in downtown. And finally, we've got baseball in Burlington. So the city invested about $1.2 million in upgrades in 2019 to the Burlington Athletic Stadium, home of the Burlington Royals. And the timing was just pretty heartbreaking because minor league contraction discussions took place soon after the new stadium improvements were finished. And we were at risk, along with 40 other communities, of losing our minor league baseball team. So we reached out to state and federal delegates to help tell our story and tell how important baseball was in Burlington. So we did appreciate our state delegates writing letters to Major League Baseball Commissioner Manfred, letting them know how important baseball was and that we really wanted to keep it here. So we're pleased to announce that late last year, it was decided that Appalachian League Baseball would stay intact in Burlington. It's no longer minor league affiliated, but we're excited because we'll have 300 of the best college sophomore baseball players across the country coming to play in the Appalachian League. So the future still starts here in Burlington, and our community still has this great resource to look forward to and make memories every summer. All right. So that's a quick overview of the partnerships that we've had recently with the state and those great successes that we don't think we could have realized without the help and the partnership of our state government and our state delegates. So now we wanted to take a look at what's on the horizon. Some of these things are underway, and some have not yet taken place, but all of which are council and city priorities moving forward that will likely have reason for state collaboration, cooperation, or assistance. I'll go over these really quickly, but please, if any of our delegates want to know more, feel free to ask. We've got our department heads on the call that can give you more information, or we're happy to set up some one-on-ones or small group meetings to really dig into the details if you're interested. We'll start with the Maple Avenue Corridor. As you know, that's a major artery into our community. And we worked hard in a collaborative and community-driven process to re-envision Maple Avenue Corridor and figure out how we could improve that entryway into our community. Unfortunately, we did not succeed in our federal build grant applications in 2019 and 2020, but we'll continue working through that with the feedback we've received from the federal government and apply in 2021. We do know that a firm commitment and participation from North Carolina DOT would be really helpful in strengthening that application. Along with transportation, citywide greenway build-out. We put in our very first greenway recently, the Downtown to Elon Greenway that's been incredibly popular and wonderful. But the city still has a commitment to build out greenways and bikeways throughout the community, and that will remain a priority. So any opportunities we have to partner with the state to put more greenways and bikeways into the community and expand walkability, we're looking forward to doing that. Burlington Alamance Airport Development and Support, the state plays a big role in supporting the local airport, and that is critical to our economic development. So the city works closely with the airport, as does the Chamber of Commerce and the county. And we want to continue to do so. We've got lots of industrial sites that are nearby the airport that we want to continue focusing on and prepare for economic development purposes. That leads into our economic development site readiness piece, specifically Sites 2 and 3. Right nearby there, they will require some infrastructure investments, especially roadways, to make them ready for development. So we really would like any partnership we can get from the state level to seeing that as a reality. Also connected is the Old City Landfill on Anthony Road. That's part of one of our economic development sites, and we're currently working with the state on remediation of that pre-regulatory landfill. If we can remediate that and make that part of a potential development, it certainly will assist in the economic development effort. As we mentioned, and Senator Gailey mentioned earlier, broadband improvement. Downtown broadband, we struggle just because of the built environment, and east and north Burlington certainly have needs. Those were really clear to us into our entire community when schools went digital and work went digital. P-FAS monitoring is an ongoing concern. We've been threatened with a lawsuit by the Hall River Assembly, but came to a letter of agreement that exists now. But this is involving the effluent into the Hall River from the East Burlington Wastewater Plant and land application of sludge on the farm fields. So this is emerging chemicals and monitoring. The regulations are changing, and it's something we're definitely interested in, and we'll want to work closely with the state on going forward. City occupancy tax. We are interested in seeking permission to increase the occupancy tax within city limits. We have 3% additional to get us to a cap of 6% that state law allows. And this would help us fund tourism-related improvements in Burlington. And the city is willing to work collaboratively with other Alamance cities to make this happen, but would like to have a separate Tourism Development Authority to ensure that that funding aligns with city goals, priorities, and we're best leveraging those tourism funds in the city to attract more and more tourism development here. And finally, the Moorfield Building renovation and Paramount expansions. We discussed the Paramount seating, but we have also recently purchased in the last couple of years a vacant forest building next door to the Paramount with the plans to expand the Paramount Theater to more of a versatile arts and culture space and to have more room in that front area and program in different ways and simultaneous ways. If arts and culture capital funding becomes available on the state level, we'd certainly love assistance in pursuing that so we can work towards renovating that floral shop and making it a wonderful public space in the Paramount.
Rachel, while you're talking about the Paramount, do you want to briefly mention our cooperation with the Alamance County Courts and utilizing that space during the pandemic?
Yeah, sure thing. So we were approached by the court system in them trying to problem-solve to figure out how they could safely hold court in COVID times. They need to socially distance and do so in a space large enough to achieve that. So they reached out to us. We've been on several tours of the Paramount Theater and found that it would work really, really well for courts, specifically civil courts, but all sorts of court trials. So we entered into an agreement with the county for the provision of the Paramount Theater to host court. So when court resumes, some of that will be taking place in the Paramount Theater, which is pretty historic in and of itself.
Rachel, why don't we stop here and say if any council members want to share any, illuminate any of the projects we've talked about? And if not, if any legislators have questions about this group of priorities?
Sure.
Councilmembers, anything else you want to add?
If I could, all of these are important. The city occupancy tax is critical to us in reference to being able to fund some other programs or help fund some of the programs or options on this list. The, one of my pet projects is indeed the Alamance Road widening and expansion to the south as we attempt to get additional properties for economic development. That's critical. But it's also a highly, it's a heavy-use road at certain times of the day. So we need as much cooperation with that as possible because it can benefit not only Burlington, it also certainly can benefit Graham as their corporate limits does towns circle back and meet. So those are two I know I'm really interested in. But we are open for any options that come available and certainly appreciate y'all's desire to work with us.
Any other council additions? Otherwise, to our representatives and senator, any questions on those items so far?
I have a question. I was wondering if there had been talk with the TDA about using occupancy tax dollars to assist with paying for the Paramount expansion. Since that's a cultural, arts and cultural thing, I would think that it would qualify for use of the occupancy tax. And at one time, well, before the pandemic, I think there was a fund balance with the occupancy tax. Of course, in the last year, that's shown itself to be kind of a poor source of ongoing funding. We can't count on it as the way that we thought it could. We have, I think the county knows a good bit about sales tax, and I'm sure y'all do as well, how sales tax has been impacted by the virus. But I'm not as up to date on how the occupancy tax has been funded, impacted by the virus. But I was wondering... But I was wondering if that conversation had been pursued.
Harden, Rachel, do you have?
I'm not aware, Rachel, I don't know if you have comments on that. I'm not aware of a direct conversation.
No, we haven't had a direct conversation. Paramount expansion or fund balance. Basically, as far as programs set up, the grant program that they have is from $5,000.
If you folks catch that, Rachel's breaking up on mine enough.
Sorry.
Limit on the grant program.
Yeah, I was getting an internet notice. We have not had a discussion specifically about fund balance or capital improvements to the Paramount, but typically the grant program is for marketing specifically. And $1,000, that's normally what the contribution is to our carousel festival.
And obviously occupancy tax across the state, you're right, Senator, has been impacted substantially by the pandemic. Our concerns, or at least our pitch here is the development of many of the parks and recreation facilities that we have done has just created indeed substantial visitation to the community that indeed creates the occupancy tax balance or funds for that particular area. So we would very much like to be able to expand that and utilize that occupancy tax to then reinvest in those facilities or other facilities to continue to try to build additional revenue streams and also provide facilities and opportunities for people to visit our community.
By the way, when I got married in 1994, the Moorefield, they did our wedding, the flowers for our wedding, and I remember very well being in my twenties and going there to choose the flowers and do the order. I also had a question about the broadband improvements for downtown East Burlington, North Carle-- I mean, North Burlington. Can y'all elaborate on that? What kind of broadband improvements do you see being needed? And kind of more detail about that, if you don't mind.
Nolan, Nolan, you want to take that one?
Well, certainly on the broadband, particularly for downtown, one of the challenges there is, over the years we have looked at this, obviously all the infrastructure is underground. So that really creates a situation where for incumbent service providers, it's much more expensive to deploy a shared broadband network downtown. So the incumbents do offer direct fiber connections downtown. One of the challenges with that is when they do that, that fiber is dedicated to that particular building and it's quite expensive to, not only to install, but the cost per month becomes somewhat prohibitive for your average business downtown. So what's really neat is a shared broadband network, similar to what you might see, you know, in other parts of town where you don't have underground utilities. So one of the things we had looked at, we did some analysis with a consultant to figure out what it would cost to install infrastructure in our downtown. Maybe it's conduit, maybe it's conduit and fiber. But then we get into the concerns about the ability statutorily of being able to lease those assets to service providers. So that becomes somewhat challenging. And we also went a step further and said, while we're doing this and communicating with ISPs, one of the things that was prohibitive to them cost-wise was when they try to install conduits and fiber downtown, they've got to tear up the concrete, they've got to replace it, it gets very expensive. So with some of our aging sidewalks, we also looked at, why don't we look at maybe a streetscape project? We would, you know, replace the sidewalks. And while we're doing that, that opens up the opportunity for, for those service providers to install their infrastructure. So those are kind of the points that we've worked on. In terms of the rest of the city, I think we had a broadband study done. And I think it's fair to say that while the city has, you know, in general, has broadband throughout the city, there are certainly areas where that could be improved. There are certain areas that have, you know, gig service and fiber to the home and other areas that would not have that. I think the county probably has even more challenges, particularly in more rural areas. But one of the things we were really working on and really through a partnership with some other municipalities, local governments in the triad region was we were trying to incentivize, we did an RFP, we're trying to incentivize competition. Because for, even though we have broadband in a good bit of our town, for some folks, it's just not cost feasible. So if we could induce some additional competition, we could get prices down. So that's another angle that we had been working on as well to try to improve things. So Harden, I think maybe that's what you were looking for.
Well, and I'll chime in too. Mayor Portem Hikes and I went down to Salisbury and worked with Mayor Alexander to get a tour of their public-private partnership that they've done for broadband to just kind of get some ideas on what they did and how they were able to deploy that. So Kathy, do you want to mention any of your thoughts on what that system looked like? And our thoughts for trying to work on a solution for Burlington?
Well, some of the, one of the issues is allowing cities to start their own systems. And as you know, that's prohibited right now. And I'm not really as familiar as I should be with how Salisbury got around that. But they did and it's working and they're working with a, they're not managing it themselves. They have another provider who's doing it. But I think opening options for cities to do better jobs with broadband would be really helpful.
And so obviously the League of Municipalities has some great documentation on what they've been talking about and working with cities on for public-private partnerships and enabling kind of that cooperative effort to fund the infrastructure related to that. Hotwired on Salisbury, like we said, is what we think is a reasonable example of leveraging kind of the shared expertise of public entities and our ability to build that infrastructure and private entities to deliver that service. So we're, we see broadband as a critical next generation infrastructure for the success of our city, but also as a way that if we're able to help develop a network, then it can always reach further into the county and serve surrounding areas. The same way our water system serves all the way up to Altamahosby and partners with cities and towns all around us. So we see any work that we do on broadband as a regional growth item. But we really are, we're looking for collaborative opportunities to move forward in that.
And Senator Gailey, I'll just tack on to what others have shared as we've had some conversations with some of the providers. This was probably two and a half, three years ago now about their interest in helping us with some connections. One of the things they said is, okay, so we understand the downtown piece. I think another piece is we're trying to get a line to connect us to Greensboro for public safety purposes and continuity of operations purposes and redundancy for public safety communications. They said, tell us what neighborhoods you feel like are, you know, missing service and we'll see if we can put that into our, you know, design and our concepts. And obviously, we never got, we never moved, never moved beyond that, but we were able to share with them, you know, some of the neighborhoods as our council members have mentioned to you that are probably in need of improvement. We have run a good bit of fiber that the city owns that connects sort of our hub here. Obviously, we're connected to all the county complexes and then we've run fiber out to our outlying facilities. So we do have, also have fiber deployed that the city owns going to traffic signals and our signals that are all connected as one system. And so there is some, you know, some infrastructure in the ground, if you will, that could be of some value to a private provider that was trying to do that, but there's just a lot of regulatory hurdles that get in the way.
And Harden, on that, Nolan might touch on it some more. We've got a big partnership with DOT right now. If you've seen construction and all of our signals going on around the city, they're doing a lot of work to upgrade that fiber, Nolan, if you want to mention that.
Sure, and Mike Dunn and his staff are doing a good job coordinating with DOT on that. In fact, when I came here in 97, we were putting in our first computerized signal system. So about every 20 years, those get revamped to bring them up and modernize them. And that's what's going on now. Mike, I think it's a 10 to 15 million dollar project. It's pretty intense, about 200 signals, 50 plus miles of fiber, there's 40 cameras plus or minus. So it's going to modernize our system and it's a good project.
Any other questions from our delegation? Appreciate those points, Amy.
This is Ricky Ortato here. I had similar questions as Senator Gailey did around broadband. So I appreciate the elaboration there on the topics at hand regarding that in Burlington. I'd be really curious, one of my, like, stepping a few steps back, one of the first things I did a few years ago when I joined a statewide tour with a statewide foundation, exploring different challenges across North Carolina was actually visit Wilson, North Carolina. And they've done a lot of this in terms of what broadband means for their community and economic development. And so this conversation, I think, is helpful to think about challenges and opportunities in the future. I'd be curious to learn more. I think you answered most of my questions with the conversation with Senator Gailey. But Kathy and Ian, if you had more resources, or maybe this is a separate conversation for another day, in terms of what more you learned in Salisbury, I think that'd be helpful to continue thinking about what what the issues entail here locally. I had one more follow-up question in regards to the future priorities in regards to the PFAS monitoring. I'm wondering if y'all could elaborate on that in terms of what are some of the challenges when it comes to monitoring right now?
Thank you, Representative. I'm going to call on Bob Patterson. Bob serves as our Water Resources Director. And as mentioned briefly, we've been working with Hall River Assembly over probably the last year, year and a half, and recently entered into a letter of agreement with them to share some data about our testing. Bob, you want to take it from here and share a little bit about what we've done and then maybe the path forward?
Sure. You know, PFAS is a broad range of chemicals that have been in use more or less since probably the end of World War II. To, a lot of the products are meant to make our lives better with water repellent or non-stick cookware, flame retardant fabrics and also flame firefighting phones, things of that nature. So also found in a lot of consumer products, coatings of like our fast food wrappers and pizza boxes and whatnot, anything that makes things slick or not adhere might be a PFAS-type chemical. Originally Teflon and some of those are what are called C8s or eight-chain carbon molecules were the original compounds. Those have been phased out and replaced with shorter chain carbons, but they're all very long-lasting in the environment and that's why they're called forever chemicals. So we have them in, you know, many consumer products. Also, some manufacturers use them in their products such as for treating fabric for automobiles, upholstery, carpeting, things of that nature for the non-stick and whatnot. So they were identified in the Hall River through the Hall River Assembly's work and some other NC State professors. And one of the potential sources that was identified is our effluent from the East Plant. So the Hall River Assembly threatened to sue us under the Clean Water Act. And over the last year, we worked with them to reach an agreement to monitor and test our effluent. We've been on ongoing testing of our influent, our effluent during this time. But we're expanding that to try to identify what are some of these potential sources. Work with our industries to identify which industries may be contributing and see if they can find a replacement chemical or remove that chemical from their process. To reduce it at the source is the best way because most of these more or less pass through the treatment process and not removed by conventional wastewater treatment processes. So we're just undertaking this expanded testing effort and that will probably take most of this calendar year. And then while we're working on that and identifying with our industries, I mean, identifying potential industry, we'll be working with them to try to reduce those loads and see what the next steps are.
Very good. Thank you, Bob.
That's helpful. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Any other questions? Did want to take a quick check in, we're coming up on 10 o'clock. I just wanted to say to our Senator and representatives, there's two other lists of priorities that I know our staff wanted to work through. How are we looking on time in your schedules?
I do need to, I have other obligations at 10:30. For asking.
Okay.
Same thing with me, 10:30 is kind of a drop dead.
Okay.
Yeah, me too.
All right, well, I'll ask staff to help us move through things in respect to that timeline. Any other questions on these future priorities? All right, Rachel?
Next up, we are going to discuss the North Carolina League of Municipalities priorities. Burlington submit, the priority, just the municipalities is a really collaborative process that lasts several months. And it's not yet complete, but the priorities that we'll discuss are that Burlington identified out of a longer list of priorities. First, I just want to mention there have been lots of discussions about the League of Municipalities. The city does work really closely with that organization. They were very small to very large and they do a pretty good job at trying to balance the needs of all of these different communities and what's important for municipalities specifically. We work very closely with the whole staff, but specifically their Executive Director of Government and Public Affairs, Don Williams, and their Chief Legislative Counsel, Erin Linea. And rely on got concerns and about Burlington specifically or about, in totality. So I did want to mention that. But the goal development process, it started in September 2020. They look at different policy-focused areas and do some research, bring it back to the full membership to do some discussion and prioritization. Then that goes to a legislative policy committee that again narrows the goals and sends that to the Board of Directors. They came up with 17 goals that they sent out to the membership. And then the city of Burlington selected our top 10, which we'll submit this week. And I believe the 15th is the date. So then the league will tell us what the statewide municipalities have selected as the top priorities for this biennium. But the ones we'll go through quickly are Burlington's top 10. So the first one is to grant local governments the authority to build broadband infrastructure, partner with private providers and provide additional funding to help close divide. We've discussed that and how we could leverage cities that goes out to private providers to incentivize them to go into areas. It's something we're certainly doing and would like the authority to do on a statewide level. Next would be to expand incentives and funding for local economic for the city, site readiness and economic development. With enhanced legal tools and funding. Then pre-state and federal funding for affordable housing. But funding stream for local infrastructure. Of course, local governments have lots of infrastructure above it is aging and needs repair and placement and build out.
Rachel, it seems like your connection is getting a little spotty. We're losing every couple of words. Do you want to try just slipping off your video real quick?
All right, I can pick it up from here, Rachel. Did you, Rachel, did you get to the number F? Is that where you stopped?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll just pick it up from here and see if mine picks up and see if Rachel's can check her internet there. So the next item we had on our list was looking for any new state mandate, state mandated benefits for municipal employees that if the legislature decided to do that, that they will provide a funding source for those. I know the, some of the firefighters groups have been actively lobbying for a few years on that. And I think the position of the league is if legislature sees fit to add that benefit, please provide the funding to do so because that would be a backbreaker for all cities to fund that in perpetuity without a revenue source. The next one is to improve statewide funding for the law enforcement officer. The next one is to improve statewide funding for the law enforcement officer training focused on use of force, mental health, and de-escalation. Obviously, all those things have been in the news. And Chief Smythe can talk a little bit more about police issues in general, but I think the league wants to see some more funding and support to make sure our law enforcement folks are trained all around the state. Finally, extended notification timeline for any changes to sales tax revenue disbursement, what that means. I think there's an example out of Rockingham County where the county changed their sales tax distribution formula very, very late in the budget process, and it was devastating, especially to some of the smaller cities in that community, which sounded an alarm for folks in other places. We don't think that's necessarily an issue in Alamance, but I think it's on a statewide level, cities are a little concerned about a last-minute change that a county might make. Harold, anything you want to share about that?
Actually, it was Richmond County.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
And it had, it was, it was done in a very non-transparent way, and it has had overwhelming impacts on all the municipalities in that county, resulting in tax increases as much as, property tax increases as much as ten cents on the dollar. And one or two of the communities thinking about potentially just not being a city anymore.
The next one I have is any, anything we can do to reduce pressure on our property taxpayers? If you could support any kind of expansion of locally controlled options for revenue generation. Again, that's sort of a statewide goal, so we don't know exactly what that is today. But as those options present themselves, we're obviously interested in trying to diversify and not put all the burden just on property taxpayers. And then finally, any support you can give for public transportation, development, and operations. We've enjoyed wonderful support in the past, both from the state and federal government. And, you know, we're very proud of our link transit system here. But the state's been wonderful, too. They enabled us with some funding they provided to make some expansions to link, post-linked startup, and we're happy about that. So just continue to keep that at your forefront. Any questions about the sort of league items? And as Rachel mentioned, the league had seventeen goals, asked the cities to vote for their top ten. And that'll happen later this week, voting by delegates across all the cities. So we'll see what the league's top ten, or what we've shared with you today is our top ten. We'll see how that links up with the league's list at the end of the week. But I think everyone is, will still be committed to, all cities are mostly committed to all the seventeen there. Any questions, comments on those?
Questions, comments from anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I want to chime in here a little bit. Just mentioning your representation down in Raleigh through the league, Aaron and Rose, they do a really good job for y'all. I've had several good meetings with them, things sometimes we didn't agree on. Other things we did, pushing forward initiatives are very easy to work with, are very knowledgeable, very competent. So the things that they present, I can readily presume have been well-vetted and that there's good reason for it. So just want to let you know that the league has a good presence down in Raleigh. You probably are already aware of that, but to just reinforce that with you and that the people that work on your behalf through the league in Raleigh are well-respected.
Very good. We appreciate that feedback.
Thank you. Well, for a second time, we'll go ahead and jump in. I'll ask Chief Smythe to turn his camera on. I think we've turned off some of our staff cameras. Maybe that will help with our broadband capabilities for the rest of the morning. Chief Smythe works very, very closely with a number of professional groups across the state, including North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police. He's also involved in a number of national organizations. Y'all may not know this, but he is one of the Kalia Commissioners that represents one of the best policing practices in North America, including Canada and Mexico and all the United States agencies. So he's one of the, I think, twelve law enforcement executives that serves as a commissioner, helping determine again what national standards are in our country and in Canada and Mexico. So Chief set the forefront, y'all see this, I think, and observe this, at the forefront of leading some of the police reform movements in the state and in the nation, quite honestly, and is on a, you know, sort of a daily conversational basis with some of the folks that you'll see commenting in the news on a national level about police reform. So we're fortunate and very happy to have him on our team. So let me yield to Chief Smythe, and he'll share a couple of sort of more tangible things at the beginning. And then the list gets a little bit bigger as we talk about some of the task force goals. So Chief, will you take it from here, please?
Yeah, you bet. Thanks for that introduction, boss. I appreciate it. Yeah, from the slides here, just looking at A through E. So A is automatic license plate readers. You might also hear it called LPR for license plate readers or ALPR. That's been initiative of the chiefs for six to eight years. It's most recently been held up in the Senate Transportation Committee. And we haven't been able to get a clear bead on why, other than kind of the nebulous Big Brother arguments. We feel those fall on their face a little bit. You know, the state uses LPR to run the toll roads near Raleigh. And it's, it exists in a lot of places across the state. We have a state law that governs the retention for those records and plenty of other things. Specifically here in Burlington, we'd love to be able to put some LPR cameras on Highway seventy because it's a numbered road and owned by the state, we can't get to the right way. And so that's what this initiative is about, is allowing us to ultimately install some very useful technology, right? It captures a picture, translates that to a digital number for the license plate, and then runs that against a database of known felons who are wanted, missing persons, abducted children, plenty of opportunities, do really good police work using technology, and we're currently prohibited from doing that. Bullet B is important to the state, but not necessarily important to us specifically, but thought you needed to be aware of it. Just delaying the required certification of police tunnel communicators. All of my dispatchers are already certified. So we're ready whenever it happens. It's not an impact to us, but statewide it is important. The Governor's Task Force listed a number of options. There's a separate sheet, I think, that you've maybe been given or we'll make sure that you get it, that lists the things that we oppose. Each of the statements includes in parentheses our belief about why it's not an appropriate or necessary step. I might bring your attention to the fifth or sixth one talks about mandating the release of all police body worn camera video. We feel like the current law works well, right? Anybody that's on the video, they can come to the station and see it immediately at no cost. Maybe immediately is not the right word, but in a day or two till it's processed, right? At no cost to them or to us. If we passed a law that said all body worn camera video was public, we would have to invest, I would need three to five new employees just to manage the workload to redact people's names and dates of birth and social security numbers out of the verbal exchanges that we have with police officers. It would really invade the privacy of many citizens without their ability to control what gets seen. So we strongly oppose changing that law currently, that it seems to work well for us. There's more on that list of ten, but I'll let you kind of drill through that. D talks about supporting five proposals from NCACP is the North Carolina Association of Chiefs of Police, the Sheriff's Association, and then other groups. Included on that list is the, to fully fund the Criminal Justice Fellowship Program. One of the issues with this program is it provided a hundred seats, a hundred opportunities for young people across the state to enter into policing. And I think you'll recognize that in the post-George Floyd era, it's very difficult for us to recruit. So this provided some economic incentive. It provided part-time job exposure for young people to work at because, you know, we've got other programs around the state that this is modeled on. But to be a police officer, you have to be twenty-one, and we want you to have an AA, and this allows for that. What happened, though, a few years ago when it was implemented, the legislature at the last moment attached a rider that included only counties at a certain population. So only the most rural counties can participate in this program. Alamance is barred from participation because of our county size. We certainly have need and would make use of the program. And it's curious to note that last year, not all of the hundred seats were even taken. The rural counties could only supply like seventy or seventy-five viable candidates for the program. So there's unused seats, and the larger areas aren't allowed to participate. We'd love to get that fixed. Fund the new state law enforcement accreditation program. You heard Harden talk about the Kalia group that I represent, but about half the states in the country have state-based accreditation programs, which are a great effort. What we see with that is we bring up the floor, right? So across North Carolina, there's four hundred and twenty-ish police departments, a hundred sheriff's departments, all run by police chiefs and sheriffs at varying levels of education and various levels of training and understanding about professional policing. We created an accreditation program that was mandatory in the state. We would bring up the quality and caliber of policing across the state in a remarkable way. Currently, only the top echelon agencies participate in Kalia accreditation, but to bring up the floor would really make significant changing in professionalizing police in North Carolina.
It's, let me jump in there, Chief, and it's a nice entree to get folks started. Folks that may have a goal of getting their national accreditation, which is over five hundred standards. When I worked in Georgia for a while as a city manager, and that was our entree. So I worked in a city of about sixteen thousand people, and our entree to get to national accreditation was to achieve state accreditation, which was about two hundred standards. And it gets you on a path to start looking at yourself and studying yourself. And it's, right now, it's either all or, you either have none or you're five hundred standards, which is just a big hurdle for many people.
Yeah, we think it's a great opportunity to, as he says, kind of dip your toe in the water and start moving in that direction. Bullet E talks about the PBA, the Police Benevolent Association, and FOP, Fraternal Order of Police. They bring forward Police Officer Bill of Rights legislation every year, whistleblower protection. And they're also seeking a dedicated seat on the CJ Standards Commission. There's already about thirty people on the CJ Standards Commission, and there are three other employee officer or employee organization that are seeking seats. And we just don't feel like it would be appropriate or manageable to add so many seats to a body that already exists, that already has great structure. And so that piece, as far as the Police Officer Bill of Rights and whistleblower protection, these are pieces of legislation that seek to segregate out police officers in municipal police agencies. The legislation would not apply to troopers. It would not apply to deputies. It would not apply to other municipal workers. And we feel like the existing protections for municipal workers in North Carolina are suitable for the work that we do. And so we don't think that any of these changes are appropriate or move forward the conversation with respect to some of the items that, that apply to unions and so forth. It's appealing upfront to say worker rights are important, and they are, right? But when you create, if you eliminate the right-to-work status that we have in North Carolina and create full-blown unions, they have a way of derailing and limiting the executive power of police chiefs. I think the Burlington Police Department is one of the finest police departments in America. We hold a very high standard. And certainly, we onboard people, and then people's conduct slips or falters, and we take that very seriously. There are groups that say you can't police the police, but I guarantee you, we do. I fire or allow people to resign in lieu of termination, probably three to five people a year. If I were hampered in my ability to do that, we would have less professional policing. We would have a lower quality of services delivered to our citizens. It's so important that police executives appropriately and with due process, which exists now, have the ability to discipline and ultimately terminate employees who, you know, break the rules. And so the PBA and the FOP are seeking to limit the appropriate power that we have, and we would like to maintain that as police executives. And I think Jamie Jordan, our HR Director, and Harden would vouch for the fact that due process exists at a high level in our organization and across the state. It's very manageable and is appropriately suited to what we do. So with that, I'll take a deep breath and ask if you have any questions about any of those or anything else that's on the list. I'm happy to answer.
Questions from our delegation?
Thanks, Chief Smythe. I don't have a specific question immediately, but I did have a request of, it may have been Beverly, or I'm not sure who was sending the emails, but I've gotten lost in my five or six inboxes. And so if you could resend the, I remember seeing it, but I can't find it now, the detailed explanations of why they support or oppose the proposals from the Governor's Task Force and the Sheriff's Association, et cetera. Having that handled would be helpful for the future.
Yeah, you bet. What's your current and best email, sir? I'll send it to you right now.
Oh, perfect. It's ricky.hurtado@ncleg.gov.
I will get it right to you.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Chief, your department's received some fairly notable awards recently. Do you want to quickly touch on some of those?
Well, we had our Training Lieutenant, who's responsible for really many of our initiatives that move us forward. She was recognized by PERF as their, kind of their young up-and-coming leadership award. She was one of two people across the entire country to receive that award. Lieutenant Baylog is, has, was recognized as the Police Executive of the Year last year from the Executive Leadership Group across the state of North Carolina. And then I think our biggest and best award in, was not quite recent, but in twenty seventeen, the Bureau of Justice Assistance under the Department of Justice recognized the Burlington Police Department as the very best police department in America for officer safety and wellness. A very prestigious award. We're very proud of that.
Thank you, Chief. Council members, anything else you want to add? Senator and representatives, any further questions on those items?
I had a couple of questions. With the automatic license plate readers, how much are those? So cities are allowed to do those already? I am given to understand, how many cities are actually using them already? And is Burlington looking to, is this something that Burlington wants to do, is get these automatic license plate readers? And how much do they cost? Yeah.
Yeah, it depends on the system. So we have four car-based systems now. So the cameras are attached on the outsides of the police cars, and we operate those. We've operated those for five or six years, I believe. It costs us about twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars per car to equip those vehicles. Some of the static systems are priced differently depending on how they're mounted and what the infrastructure is, whether you have to run new existing fiber cable to it or you can use hotspot technology powering the instruments. So there's some variations there, but they're not cheap. I would say probably twenty thousand dollars for a fixed site. There are a number of folks that are using fixed sites. In fact, Elon University has, I think, as many as maybe twenty or twenty-five fixed site LPR cameras on their campus because it's their private property, they can install those, you know, wherever they wish. Wrightsville Beach, I know, has one way in and one way out. So the bridge is, is somewhere they've got cameras there, so they know everybody who comes onto the island and when those vehicles leave the island. There are a number of cities around North Carolina. I'm sorry, I don't have a head count for you on that. But yeah, did that cover all your questions, ma'am?
Any other questions from folks? Rachel Harden?
I think that's all we have in terms of general presentation. I guess I would just urge each of our legislators to feel free to call on our council members and/or any of us here at the city. If you've got a question, if there's an issue that's, you know, popped up, we'll drop what we're doing. We'll make sure you've got a good supply of cell phone numbers, et cetera. We'll all, you know, agree to drop what we're doing to try to help answer a question or understand things. We found that helpful in the past to get some local perspective. So just know that we're here as resources for anything that may pop up. As you can see, we've got, we didn't give all our departments a chance to talk, but we've got a very impressive group of subject matter experts here. And we're, again, available whenever you need us.
I did want to touch on one thing. We talked about NCLM goals. One other organization that Burlington's part of is Metropolitan Mayors Association. It's something we've been part of for quite a while. And obviously, there have been some changes. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the relationship between those two organizations. But I do want to mention that Burlington's advocated for the change that But I do want to mention that Burlington's advocated for the change that has happened where the Metropolitan Mayor's Organization has merged back into the league of municipalities. We feel like that helped both organizations become more effective. So their executive director for the Metro Mayor's Bo Mills is now a league employee. And so you'll probably see him up on, at the Capitol along with Aaron and Rose. And so we, being Burlington, recognize the importance of Metro Mayor's. Being able to coordinate some of the larger cities like us to help apply our expertise, our knowledge and what we're experiencing in our communities. To help support all of the cities in North Carolina. So hopefully the messaging you see from Metro Mayor's is really about what do we as Metro Mayor organizations see as kind of the top one, two, three goals. From our cities that we see as collaborative partnerships to support the state as a whole. So you'll see the Metro Mayor's put their stamp of approval on a lot of those league goals. Because again, those organizations have come back into alignment, thankfully.
This is a council member, I'd like to thank all of you all for taking time. I know it's a busy time for you, getting back to Raleigh and, and obviously working and getting assignments in terms of various committees and so forth. But we certainly appreciate the time you shared with us this morning. And we look forward to working with you throughout the, throughout your term.
All right, well, I know y'all have commitments at ten thirty, so we got you out of here in time. Any last things before we wrap up?
Yeah, just thank you so much. You know, I grew up in the county, but back and forth into Burlington all the time. And, you know, all growing up and since we were able to move back and. Been the city park, rode the train as a child, all that stuff. So thank you for making this time available for us to hear your concerns. I appreciate it.
Closing remarks, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm well aware that Burlington lost two favorite sons through Senator Gunn's retirement and Representative Ross not winning reelection. And I know you've always had a, a sense of having strong advocacy down in Raleigh because of that. But, you know, Amy, with her experience as a county commissioner and the chair of the commission has certainly made, developed relationships with you and Burlington. And across all the other municipalities in Alamance County. You know, we have with myself, we have an eight year relationship that we're continuing to build upon, that's been very good. And I just wanted to thank you for that good information. It's one of the things that is probably the most daunting, I think, and the job as a state representative is sifting through all the information that comes to you. But I know when I sit down with people from Burlington, it's going to be fact based, it's going to be evidence based, evidence driven. And that's kind of the coin of the realm in Raleigh, good, sound information. So just keep up with the good information flow like we've done this morning. The pictures, the dramatic difference between the North Park pool before and after. That was a very good project and I'm glad that we were able to assist in a small way. And hopefully we can do more things like that throughout the county, not just in the city of Burlington. But thank you, appreciate the good working relationship we've had and we'll just make it stronger in the two years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. I appreciate you mentioning that. We've, we've always prided ourselves in Burlington when we work with our state and our federal delegation to provide, you know, those real stories about what, what does the change look like on the ground? And how does a state or federal decision actually impact people's lives? So anytime we can help you translate that policy into what it actually looks like for our, our citizens, we're happy to do that. Happy to bring you that data. Because as you mentioned, it, it really makes the difference. Representative Hurtado, any?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for, for this morning full of, of really great information. And want to thank all the speakers and being willing to dive into any and all topics that continue to educate us. Want to echo a similar sentiment as Representative Riddell and Senator Gailey around. Just the willingness and excitement around supporting the city of Burlington. I would, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize how excited people are about the opportunities that exist in the city. And what Burlington means, not just for Alamance County, but for this entire region. And so I'm certainly excited to be an advocate and a partner in making those dreams come to fruition. I would also be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the, the challenging year we've had as, as a, as a community, as a state and as a nation. And really hope that we can take the lead as a county. A, in honoring all those diverse perspectives and really recognizing that that diversity makes us stronger. And so I'm really excited to work with Senator Gailey and Representative Riddell and thinking about what the future of Burlington looks like. Because it is exciting and I think we can certainly set a model and, and what cooperation and partnership looks like in, in moving all of us forward. And so I'm really excited about the, the year ahead and looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
If I could just add one thing, thank you, Representative Hurtado for, for saying those things and for triggering my mind too. That, you know, we have this virus vaccine distribution that is turning out to be a real challenge. For counties and cities across the state, especially health departments. And I just want to take a minute to say thank you to the city of Burlington. Because I've talked to the county manager about the challenges that our health department has been facing. And I understand that there's been collaboration and cooperation with the city of Burlington. And I've talked to people and the health director from other parts of the state outside Alamance County. And I was really surprised, honestly, and disappointed that that's not always the case. And I think that one thing that we've definitely seen through the virus is that Alamance County really reaches across jurisdictional lines and sort of silos. And all those kind of barriers and really is a big community that works together. And I really appreciate that. And hopefully, at appropriate time, the story will be told about the cooperation between the city. And the county and the health department about the virus distribution. And, and the public can be more aware of, of the things that, the work that y'all have done and is going forward. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you. All right, manager, anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, with that, huge thank you to Senator Gailey, to Representatives Riddell and Hurtado. Welcome and congratulations on your upcoming terms. And I thank you to all of our staff for being part of this meeting and your, your work in putting together these agenda goals. So we do recognize these documents will be living documents. So you'll see things change and evolve throughout the year and we look forward to everyone's partnership as we move forward. With that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks.